We get to go? Awesome. Good morning, everyone. We'll call Committee of the Whole meeting to order. This meeting will be conducted in person and via conference call in accordance with the MGA Section 199. Council chambers is open to members of the public while continuing to use our current telecommuting process. To join the meeting via teleconference, please dial the phone number that's on the agenda. We have an agenda before us. Any additions or changes?
I'd like to add letter support for Mayor Field HOA La Alta Community Hall Recreation Project. And it's for a grant application.
So let's add that under Agenda Item 2.4. Any other additions or changes? If not, a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Just a question, I guess. Can we add that to a Committee of the Whole? Are you hoping to vote on that, to approve it? That would be a, can we do that at a council?
We can, as long as it's not a bylaw.
Oh, I see.
That's what CAO Henderson was just, remember the changes that we made to the Committee of the Whole bylaw itself?
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Or procedure bylaw.
I would have added it to regular meetings, just timeliness of it with the summer break. They need to get it done, so.
A motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Also move.
Thank you, Counselor Pigger. I'll call the question, all in favor? Motion is carried. We'll move to Agenda Item 2.1, Bylaw 2024-24, Procedure Bylaw.
Good morning, Counsel. Brian from Administration. At a previous council meeting on July 2, 2024, Council directed Administration to bring forward the suggested revisions to the Procedure Bylaw to a future Committee of the Whole meeting. So today is when we are bringing the four suggested revisions for Council's consideration, or the Committee's consideration to discuss at the Committee of the Whole to bring back potential revisions to a future council meeting for bylaw updates. So at that July 2 meeting, there was four updates that were suggested by Council. So what Administration has done is just kind of went through each suggested revision and just put kind of our own commentary behind it. So the first revision that was identified during the July 2 council meeting was to amend Section 102 to state linked on the Wheatland County's public website. And that was just a recording of the actual video. Our review was that this was a very minor amendment for clarity and kind of modernizes the language in the bylaw, which kind of makes it better to understand in today's kind of context. So Administration had no problems with that one. And any changes to the bylaw has been, as always, changes in green, as new additions, and anything deleted in red crossed out on the bylaw, which has also been attached to this report. The second note that Council had during the council meeting was to remove Section 134 or 139, as it did appear to be redundant. Administration did agree with that. And we decided to remove Section 139 of your agenda package. The only real difference between the two is that the chair was identified in 134, Paragraph 134. And maybe I'll scroll down to that actual paragraph. Yeah, so the Paragraph 134 on page 17 remained. Realistically, the only difference with this change is that remove 139 kind of redundant. And it just had, just kind of mentions the chair. But as always, in the Procedure Bylaw, there's also mechanisms that allow the chair to kind of do this. So Administration had no, seemingly no issues with this and the recommended revision by Council. So the third one was a little bit, one that Council kind of has encountered a few times since the new Procedure Bylaw hasn't been in place. So contemplate more than one amending motion under Section 157. So our review was that it doesn't come forward very frequently, but it has. So given that the motions are to provide clarity to Council and Administration, it would be wise to open this one up to more than one amendment, just so we can make the, or Council can make the motions as clear as possible for Administration, Council, and the public to see. So we did amend Section 157 of the Procedure Bylaw, draft, of course. And that amendment has been on page 19 of the agenda package. So it reads, "Only one amending motion and only one amendment to an amending motion are permitted at the same time. When there are multiple amending motions at the same time, the amending motions are considered in reverse order to which they are moved, resulting in the original motion considered last," if that makes sense. So what we're trying to do is, so let's say a motion is on the floor and then there's an amending motion to that motion. So what would happen is that that amending motion would be voted on. If that passes, then that becomes the initial motion or the new motion. And then further motions kind of go forward at that point. So this is the best way that Administration could provide this one. It is a little bit complicated, but kind of the main thing is that the last motion that you're voting on is the one that's last in front of you, so.
Could we just change the word "original" to "main"? And then there's more clarity, because the original may be amended through amending motions. But we're still saying that we would vote on the main motion last. Just "original" could be confusing if the original's been amended.
Yep. That can definitely be done. Did the Committee have any other suggestions to revise Section 156?
So it seems a bit confusing to me. It says, the first sentence says, "Only one amending motion and only one amendment to an amending motion are permitted at the same time." Then the next sentence says, "When there are multiple amending motions at, when there are multiple amending motions at the same time." That doesn't, one contradicts the other.
Yeah.
Do you think if we put "subsequent" or just took "at the same time" out, does that correct that, Counselor Larsson? Or do you have a suggestion? I did note that, too. I just missed it. Multiple subsequent amending motions?
Yeah.
Just take "at the same time"?
"At the same time" needs to be removed, for sure. Yeah, probably would just be... Yeah, because it can only be one.
Yeah, that's a really clear.
If there's no other discussion on that one, we can move to the last point. Which is just that we'll continue to be repetitive, but it is, I think it is a good practice.
Yeah.
Sorry, Deputy Reeve Clausen, then CAO Henderson.
Sorry, I just want to speak, if there's even a timeline, because, you know, you could go first, second, third, gone, and then someone could be on the line or trying. That's what I was trying to, when I was chairing, if you don't know if someone's going to speak up or whatever. If there's a, should we give them a minute? Should we give them something? Or just up to the Chair's discretion?
I think if we're calling three times, and I think we tend to naturally sort of pause each time we call. I noted you did that. And I think I've done that at times. But I think if we consciously pause so that we're ensuring and...
Yes, and kind of our review is that it's a good practice, just in case. You know, you don't have to say, "This is first reading or first opportunity, wait a minute, second opportunity." You can do it a little bit quicker. That is at the discretion of the Chair. Of course, the Chair chairs the meeting, so you can go as fast or as slow as you want. But I think just for the sake of time savings, it doesn't really get utilized. Like I would say, and Council can, or the Committee and Council can attest to this, is that usually when there's someone in the audience or someone on the phone, they're ready to go. They're here to speak and support our opposition. So it may be a little bit redundant, but I think it's a good practice. So Administration just recommended leaving that one in and just maybe speed it up on the three readings. And then besides that, that's Administration's report on the Procedure Bylaw. The Committee's provided good recommendations on clarity on some of these, and Administration will take those ones if a motion is passed by the Committee to direct Administration to do so. Thank you.
Thank you to Administration for your work on the bylaw. Any further questions on the updates presented? Committee of the Whole's wishes.
I'll make the motion to forward the changes to Bylaw 2024-24 and bring forward at a future council meeting.
Perfect. Thank you, Deputy Reeve Clausen. Any questions or discussion on the motion? I'll call the question, all in favor? Motion is carried. Let's move to Agenda Item 2.2.
Yes, good morning, Counsel. Brian from Administration again. This is a topic that was discussed at a previous council meeting. So on June 4, Council made the following motion, that Council directed Administration to look into Council recognition of provincial grant funding. So Administration doesn't currently have a process in place recognizing provincial grant funding when we do receive it. So so far in 2024, we've sent out three thank you letters to the province. And those are all requested by Council, by Council resolution. So in April 2024, we sent out two about the La Alta Wastewater Lagoon in Forest Main Design Project funding. And in June, we sent out one to the Minister of Municipal Affairs on the local government fiscal framework funding. So at this point, we don't have a process in place. We did kind of take a look and we don't really have a firm process in place or any real suggestions on it. It's really something I think that would be just determined by the Council of the day, whether or not you want to send thank you letters for grant funding. It, I think ultimately, it's important to understand or recognize discretionary grant funding as well. It might be a good conversation piece when you see the ministers at, you know, various meetings and things like that. Maybe not just automatically thank them. And my, just, that was just Administration's only thing, just to kind of consider. Again, the effort in actually putting a thank you letter together is very minimal. And it would just have to come on behalf of Council, and we can do that very easily. So really up to the discretion of Council, whatever you'd like to do. If it's discretionary, great. If it's all, that's good, too. Just let Administration know. Thank you.
What's Committee of the Whole's thoughts?
I think it's nice to acknowledge receipt of a grant and some kind of official letter back, I think is proper etiquette. Some of our, like, we know we've applied for them, but we don't know if we're successful sometimes. So it kind of gets us, as long as we're aware of it, I'd have no problem. I don't know if it's an automatic thing that we should do. I think it should be discussed every time. Like, how many will we get in a year? Four?
It varies a lot.
Yeah. Just make sure we're aware of the successful funding, which we always do. And then prompt us to write a little thank you letter. That's how I think of it, but I don't know anyone else.
There are some of these funding deals that sort of, like, that don't get as much publicity. Like, so the engineering on the overpass at 265, or 264, whatever that is, La Alta Road, we know we've got it, like, it's, but it's sort of a line item. A line item thing, it's pretty hard to, you know, to dig them out. But it would, you know, it's good that the, like, it's good to let the province know that we're thankful that they're doing this and that they're, that this thing is going ahead in the stages as it is a, what is it, probably a four-year project from the time that you, when they start spending money on it until you actually start seeing some visible signs that there is actually something happening. So I think it helps, a letter like that, if we can ferret those out, I think it helps with our job, too, and the fact that people will go, oh, they sent a thank you for the engineering, so that must mean that the, that the overpasses is on the board, right? So I think if we can ferret these things out and just, and then just bring it forward, I think it does nothing but help us.
Any other thoughts?
I wouldn't mind seeing just a really simple policy, I think in line with the comments, just indicating that successful grant applications will come forward to Council for awareness. And then I think it would be good for Council to recognize that and send a thank you. And I think it would also be good either if Council or if Administration identifies an opportunity for something beyond a letter as well. There could be opportunities where we want to, just from a GR perspective, maybe invite to a commissioning or invite to some type of opportunity to do that recognition in a bit more public way than a letter as well. I agree, it is good for the public to be aware. But it is also, I think it's critically important that we recognize the intergovernmental partnership that the province does on different projects. And it's important for industry to see that and for our residents to see that, our agricultural community, really all of the stakeholders that would be impacted. So I'm grateful Administration brought this forward.
Any other discussion or points for Administration to consider?
One question Administration would have, just for total clarity. So would that just be discretionary grants? Or would that be grants such as the local government fiscal framework? Because that was one that the county would receive on an annual basis. Is that something that Council would like to see? The Committee like to see in this policy? Or would that be, federal gas tax be included? I'm just trying to make sure that when we bring a policy for Council or the Committee of the Whole's approval, that we just have a clear, clear understanding of exactly what should be included in that policy. Thank you.
I think my preference would be all funds. I don't think we want to take for granted funding, even if we're, you know, in a multi-year agreement or if there's a multi-year commitment from the province or the federal government or the federal and the province together. I think it's important to not take that for granted and to still recognize those are important investments. LGFF, for example, that's a multi-year funding agreement, but it's critically important for our infrastructure and for the partnership that the province takes in building and maintaining infrastructure in municipalities. What, does anybody object to that? I don't think there's a tremendous number of them, so it shouldn't be onerous. Does anybody object? Counselor Larsson?
Don't object, no. I just, yeah, I think it should be kind of any and all. And I think it is better to have Council provide a resolution about what kind of thank you, if it's a letter or if it's something else. Or, yeah, I think each should come from Council resolution.
There's discussion with the Sand and Gravel Association as well, for example, around the cap levy. And so it might be good, like, just to have a broader view, too, of any sort of external funding sources. One of the industry's requests is that municipalities do a better job of recognizing the impact of the sand or of the cap levy. So if we could, that's one specific one. I don't know if anybody has any other ones that have been brought to your attention that we could do a better job of recognizing.
So that just kind of comes back to the having a specific resolution, because sometimes we might want to do something more public, like publish a thank you as opposed to just sending it directly to them. Or, there's lots of different options that we might want to explore for different kinds of things.
Yeah, and different municipalities take different approaches. Some, for example, the cap levy, they just put into general revenue. Others do more similar to us, where some is, some is a ratio of it is earmarked. I know when a neighboring municipality does signage, where they're using that cap levy to recognize industry. The counterargument to that is industry funds the vast majority of everything our Council is able to fund through tax revenue. And we don't necessarily put up signs for all of the oil and gas or linear tax that funds 60% of our operations. But there's, so there are counter considerations to that as well. But perhaps if Administration could just examine it. Maybe, does the Committee have a motion? Yeah, there's recommendations to choose from on the bottom of page 26.
I'll make the motion to direct Administration to develop a policy for Council consideration regarding thank you letters as discussed today.
Thank you, Deputy Reeve Clausen. Does that give enough clarity for Administration?
Yes, it does.
Perfect. Any questions or discussion from the Committee?
One page or less.
I'll call the question, all in favor? Motion is carried. We'll move to 2.3.
Morning, Committee members. Dave from Administration. At the February 13, 2024 Committee meeting, the Committee reviewed the Severn Creek Dam Recreation Area and recent issues encountered in the site. The Committee discussed the following management options for the recreation area. Designate areas day use only. Allow camping on the county-owned land and negotiate a lease with the province to create camping area with uniform regulations for the entire site. Each option presents different opportunities and challenges which are outlined in the report. One significant gap that was identified in managing the site was the absence of a development permit to specify intended use. Regardless of the specific use, a development permit would ensure the site utilized as the county intends. So there's lots of different, kind of, general outlines and kind of all the options that we provided. I also have Suzanne Hayes, our Development Officer, and Chris Perman, Manager of Protective Services, that also helped with the report with some of the expertise in their respected areas. Some of the options outlined in the report recommended a parks bylaw. And we've provided kind of a sample from Neop County for information. And there's also a photo in the package as well. And that was taking, an aerial photo was taken on June 30, I believe, is the date on that photo as well. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions for Administration?
I just don't know what to do with this one. I, oh, sorry. We'll go Counselor Larsson, then Counselor Kestner.
I'd like to be able to offer the recreational space, but I wish there was somebody else that wanted to operate it. I don't, I don't really feel like Wheatland County should develop a campground and operate a campground. But I do appreciate that the space is kind of valuable from a tourism perspective and, yeah. I don't have any good suggestions of what could be done to make it a, so that it isn't being taken advantage of, I guess.
Counselor Kestner?
Yeah, I'd like to see the campground there, but I think we need to have some more regulations. I would first think we should ask the approach of province, see if we can manage their land. And we can make, I think we should charge. Just that way, that's the only way we can have control. I'm thinking now, on provincial land, it's a two-week duration camping. I think the county should be the same, just to avoid confusion. I think in this day and age, we can have online registrations. And whoever, peace officer or ag service or somebody that's there cleaning up the campground like we do now, doesn't take a lot extra time to just check license plates and make sure they're registered. And if they're not, a substantial penalty, so they don't do it again. If it's only $50, nobody's going to bother. But if we make it 500, I think they'll be. And online registration, pretty easy. And I'm giving it some thought if we want to have it all year round or not. There's, our people come out there and they like to do ice fishing and winter camping. But I don't want to run into the trouble we ran in last Christmas. But I think if we limit the, limit the stay, I think that's the only way to get. Because people are coming out now. I don't know if they're, they just stay there all year long. You can read into that whatever you want. But I think if you have to vacate it after two weeks, there was, in the past, there was families from the county would go there and camp, take their kids there, and they would go fishing at a nice spot. As a little kid, used to have motorized boats on there, but that's not allowed anymore. I don't want to take that away. But being that it's not regulated and it's freefall the way it is, I don't know of anybody from the county going there anymore because of what it's turned into. So I would like to make it so people in the county would feel comfortable going there. We have to regulate it somehow. And the only way we can have rules there is by regulating it. There's no other way. I mean, the picture, I've just got it on here, too. It looks nice. There's not many people there. There's probably somebody camping on the other side of the lake. But, but still, there's lots of room there. It's mowed there where they're camping. Looks a lot better than it did last year, that's for sure. But I think first off would be to get approval from the province that we'd be able to manage their portion of land. As far as fencing off our portion and just having foot, yeah, they'll still go camp on the provincial side. I don't, I don't see that as a fix. Nobody, I don't think, is going to go inside the fenced portion of the county land. There's no access to the water. They're going there to, for access to the water, for the most part, for being able to camp there. That's my thoughts, anyway.
Thanks, Counselor Kestner. Deputy Reeve Clausen?
Yeah, I think we need to look, you know, the history of this, I've heard it several times. And it's not just our land, it's the provincial crown land. And I think we have to have that lease. And then we can, with that lease, have control. And I see that going forward as the first step. And maybe with a lease, maybe they'll contribute some money, because this is our, part of their problem, too, which they probably have no money, because they do this up in Rocky Mountain House area up in there. I've heard other counties where they have that same interface problem with crown land and problems of cleaning it up. And there's no charge, and there's all kinds of problems. And the local government ends up cleaning up the problem, and there's no recovery of costs. But I think if we have a lease, going into it, recognizing all these issues, we know coming, going forward is the first step. And then see what we can and cannot do. Do I want to see a full-service campground there? No. If it's a day-use area or something like that that is easily controlled, fine. Because it's not going to go away. People are going there as a habit now. There's lots that are out there, and it's a nice little area. Not where I would go camping, but that's besides the point. But you have to have that uniform control over there. Otherwise, like you said, someone's just going to go to the other side where there is none, if they know it, and then they'll just ignore it. But you have to have that uniform control over there. Otherwise, like you said, someone's just going to go to the other side where there is none, if they know it, and then they'll just ignore it.
Any other thoughts? Councillor Eckert, then councillor Larsson.
I would like to explore the possibility of getting the province making it all one deal. And then maybe there's enough there that maybe you could lease this out. I don't, I don't want to see the county spending a whole bunch of money. I can see a private operator, if they can get access to that whole thing, to take care of that so that we can include, we can increase the area. We've got a, we could have a tourist deal and and somebody could actually make some money on it. But if we have to run it ourselves, this is just going to be a money pit. So I'm looking at it, getting, seeing if to get the province on board so that we can have control of the whole thing. And then looking at a lease operator to run the operation, I'm good with that.
So a couple of questions, and I don't know who they're for, whether it's you, Chris, or, or who, but there's, there's a number of those people out there that look to me to be permanent campers. I think there's some on the provincial and some on the county owned land. And what I, what I would struggle with is, and I've seen this in at the Prairie Oasis Campground, which is in special area number two, it has a two week limit. So then people go out there and they have permanent campsites set up there. They just renew it every two weeks. So what's it going to be like to enforce this? Like I'm almost leaning to a day use area because it's going to be less hassle. But I'd like to see what you all think of, which, which is going to be the easiest for us to manage because I don't see us putting, I mean, if you're going to make that into a proper campground, you need power, you need water, you need whatever else. Or it's, you know, there's no lease operator that's going to come in and, and take over that if there isn't any, any facilities. I can't see that happening, which I don't think we should do either. So what, in, in your guys' mind, what's the best option for us both on enforcement and, you know, easiest thing for the county to do? I, I think we could still make it if we had site signs, they don't have to be serviced, they could just be signs and we could, there's like, there's kiosks you could have for onsite to print the tickets. I'm just, I'm researching that a bit, but there's a way we could do it kind of pretty easy and then we'd be able to track where they were on which site, then we could manage that two week stay. Chris could comment about how much enforcement that would be, like being out there every whatever, probably a weekly thing would be pretty much checking that, that out, right? I don't think you'd have to do it every day, but probably a weekly, make sure everybody has their tickets and those type of things. I think it could be done fairly cost effective, low tech as well, but there still will be that problem. I think they, they would, then would it be if they moved from 10, site 10 to site nine, would that be the two week? Or those type of things, we have to, we have to make sure we were clearing the bylaw and that stuff as well, that it's like right off the site or whatever. I think that, I think it could be done fairly easily, kind of with what's there, with just some minor modifications on like site signs and those type of things, without having to do a bunch of servicing and, and that type of thing.
Any other questions or discussion? I think there's a, sorry councillor, did you?
I think there's a risk regardless of what we do, that there could be issues there. There's issues in day use areas, there's issues in, honestly, in seasonal campgrounds, there's issues in, on crown land, there's issues in campgrounds. There's the potential for altercations or issues or people that gamify the system to use it as a place to live, affordable living is challenging for people and there are people that have resorted to living in campgrounds. That's just a reality in Alberta right now, well beyond Alberta. But my hesitation is to like be reactive to specific incidents when that could happen regardless of what we do. I'm open to exploring some kind of an agreement with the province. My preference would be for us to more align with the crown land principles and recognizing that we might need a development permit to facilitate that. I, I do see a potential opportunity for somebody, a private sector operator to come in if there was that full, like an agreement for the full area. But I also think it could be very challenging to find consistent operators for that. I know the province struggles. They've had to shut down several sort of less formal or less serviced campgrounds in the province because they have advertised for operators or even for hosts and struggle to have the labor force for that. And I know we have capacity challenges as well with our bylaw and enforcement in the county with what we already have here. I, I would hate to see it limited to day use and also the expense of that. And definitely could foresee challenges with enforcing that as well. So there's definitely diverse perspectives around the table. I, I love that we have that area. Like councillor Kestner, I would love to see it be a welcoming place for all people. But you honestly could have challenges regardless of what we do with it. You could have a certain subset of people that book the campground pretty consistently and it could still be a deterrent to Wieland County residents or visitors to take advantage of, of the water and of the recreational opportunities there, but yeah, it's, I think labor force could be one of our biggest challenges and either internal or external capacity for enforcement. But my personal preference would be to explore the doing the development permit, the process that's required, but then to align with that random camping with a maximum stay of 14 days. I'd be open to, like you said, a low tech if there would be a way to do permitted camping. They even, even without printing, you know, just the two piece registration form that they have in lots of provincial campgrounds that you just fill out onsite and I have to actually remember to bring a checkbook and things like that. But yeah, it's just, I guess minimizing the financial impacts and the impacts to our capacity are my main considerations while trying to maintain that amenity for both our residents and also visitors.
I agree, we should talk to the province and try to get an agreement there. It is going to cost money. You do have, it's going to take a little bit to make distinct roads, distinct sites, put the, put the numbers up, get it, get it organized. It's, it's not going to be a lot, but you might want to have a sandy dump. But if you can use technology to register it and then just have a weekly, that's not a bad idea. But I think you still can get a host. Or, but if you did get it organized and stuff, you may want to lease it out too. But I think the first step would be actually to talk to the province.
So I was thinking about Amber's comments about like if there was just a registration desk, even if it was like an honor system where you, I don't know, you put it in a lockbox or something, you put your payment so that if you've got cash or you've got whatever. I don't know. And we might miss some, but you might get some revenue from it. And yeah, if we kept it really low tech, in fact, I would think, don't put a sandy station because then people will want to, will be more inclined to stay longer. I would say just keep it really low tech. Yeah, like identify a bunch of different sites and have a sign saying two week maximum. And just try and, try and keep it as low tech as we can and as low cost as we can. But yeah, the lease with the province is not a bad idea and and I think if people are staying out there all summer now, then we shouldn't really have a problem getting a host. Any of those people might be interested in kind of managing it for us, like the low key kind of way.
I have heard of horror stories if you don't have a sandy dump. So, but I mean, I don't think you need power and water. But that was just my thought on that. I think like it's a nice area. It's water in Alberta. Why not develop it? It's sad that we have to do it, but yeah. Be nice to have visitors.
So administration had recommended implementing both a development permit and a parks by law to provide the necessary tools for effectively managing the site and leased lands as a campground. Does anybody object to administration proceeding along that route while also exploring with the province? I guess one question I have is by entering into or contemplating a lease with the province, are we like then assuming responsibility for enforcing on what's currently crown land and would be provincial responsibility?
Yeah, yes, we've, we've talked to the province and they're willing to, to lease to us. And yeah, would be on the hook for enforcing the rules and, and that was part of their, their concern was we had a solid management plan to deal with long-term campers on, on their land, right? So that was, that was one of the, the, the main concerns with, with it. Because they're not dealing with it.
Yeah, it is a definitely a very challenging thing. And for me, that's part of what leans me more towards aligning with the crown land and just maintaining responsibility for our section. And then if we were aligned with the crown land, but put the proper development permit in place and the proper just align it with our line use by law so that that did facilitate enforcement. Enforcement's going to be challenging anyways because they can literally just claim that they were gone for two days while, you know, we didn't have enforcement checking and that they're back for another two weeks stay. That happens on crown land. Yeah, I'm very torn for sure.
Is there any power there at all?
There's no power.
What are people's thoughts on assuming the responsibility for the crown land portion?
Kind of feel like we're already have our own. What's the, what's another little parcel? Because you're going to have, you're going to be enforcing it one side and then on the other side, it's all freefall.
Unless we left it as it is, sorry councillor Larsson, I'll get to you in just a second, unless we leave it as it is. Like there are many areas in the province that are crown land and some areas of the province, actually maybe you might need a permit to crown land camp. So you could still institute a, a similar crown land camping permit where you could generate probably a very small amount of revenue. But still do some permitting and then you could track license plates and that type of thing with that. But I'm just, I can't foresee that by going to the permitted camping, like it's going to be, I think, quite expensive to facilitate that, even if it's very low tech and and really unless you're putting a lot of capacity behind enforcing that, it's still going to be very similar to a a crown, you know, you can do two weeks, say that you're gone for a day, leave for the afternoon and start your two week stint again the next day.
Councillor Larsson.
I think councillor Kestner's first, but.
That's okay.
Oh, okay. I was just going to say, I think Dawn is right there. If, if, if the county just manages their land, then they'll just all move over to the provincial part and then we're going to be stuck with the problem anyway. But if we take on the county land, but it's pretty clear from what these guys have said, we're going to have to take over enforcement of that as well.
And I think in the reality, when we get a complaint, people are phoning it in or getting a hold of the county first, they're not checking whose land it is. We're, we're involved either way. So I think just look after the whole thing. It's just easier that way. And if somebody stays three weeks, yeah, maybe they move, maybe they didn't. But last year there was people there had built on decks. And gardens. Now I'm thinking, you've been there longer than two weeks, you've got a garden growing. So we don't want people roger tillering up our parkland and, yeah, that, that, that just doesn't go. And we don't have to spend a bunch of money. We don't have to spend, we haven't spent any money on it now and we have 20 campers there. So I still think an online thing, we don't need a coice there to put money in and somebody trying to hook onto it, pull it out for 10 bucks. It's just register online, you got a list every day who's paid, license numbers, site numbers, maybe we can put up. I would just leave that to staff as I don't think it'll grow much more than it is. It's just a nice little spot for, there are people that like to camp, dry camping, no power, no water, haul everything in. Hopefully they haul it all out, but we do have a garbage receptacle there, so I would be in favor of that. Give it a try anyway. If it grows more than we, future council can do more considering on it, but if it stays the way it is, I don't think, there's lots of room out there really. It's just that they all like to seem to get on that one tip and get in there pretty close.
So I think that provides a bit of clarity for me. I think if we can focus on what the actual problem is we're trying to solve. And if the problem is things like more permanent structures or rototilling for a garden, question to administration, could things like that, if we did a development permit even aligned with crown land camping, you could make it so you're not permitted to cultivate or build permanent structures. Crown land campers are responsible for removing. Now it doesn't always happen, but this could happen with permitted camping as well, where we're left with an extreme amount of garbage and unsightly, you know, sites after campers vacate them. Would that be something that you could mitigate through putting a DP in place, but allowing a more crown land style camping where you could mitigate some of those issues?
Yes, I think we could include, we could include conditions that mitigate some of that and make rules that you can't have permanent campgrounds. And potentially we could maybe put it also that the same camper can't stay longer than two weeks in any month. I mean, at least we'd have something to go back on if we noticed the same license plate and said, well, there's a rule about that.
That's a good idea. Deputy Reeve Claussen.
Hearing everything here, my opinion's kind of changed and I'm going to not allow camping day use only and then it eliminates all the problems. And if they go on the crown land, well, that's their problem. They should enforce their own land. We don't have, because if we assume responsibility for it by through a lease, it just opens up a whole, we're going to have a line item on a budget forever, developing a campground that we don't really, why don't we just, and I think of you know, rest areas along the play. It says day use camping, that's how they, you know, you don't camp there. It's only for a rest. Come, come and leave, take your crap and go. And that would solve all the problems. People can still enjoy it for the day.
I think we had done that in 2020. We had posted no camping.
Covid hit and we kind of relaxed those rules, but.
But if we are going back to the core problem that we're trying to solve, like I don't think it's bad to allow people to camp there. I think if we are going to like a permitted camping, and there's going to be more challenges than I think we're anticipating. I'm envisioning your 2:00 PM check-in time and your existing campers are still there and new people are showing up or there's confusion, you know, confusions over bookings and we're not going to have anybody there to sort any of that out. I could foresee escalating altercations based on things like that versus people successfully crown land camp all over the province. It's for the most part, there are areas where issues, especially where there's heavy, heavy tourism. There's substantial issues, but we're not experiencing those substantial issues here, like status quo. Are, are you getting like an inordinate number of enforcement calls? Is it frequent? Just to get, I just want a sense of what the real, what the problem is that we're trying to solve.
So I understand last winter there were a couple.
So I understand last winter there were a couple of criminal issues out there. From our department's perspective, we've not had a call out there in several years. The people who are out there actually police themselves, they actually maintain their own sites. Like, all those lawn cuts that were in those photos were actually done by the campers themselves, not by our staff. Our staff does the rest of the, like, everything else. They, the ones that are out there tend to look after it themselves and maintain it. And actually, will be going around and telling the folks that aren't to clean up the, clean your stuff up and so on and so forth. It actually, we just don't have a lot of issues out there.
That's encouraging to hear. And issues like criminal activity could happen under any system that we, like, criminal activity could happen in a day, day-use area. Our CMP should be enforcing criminal code. For me, just personally, to make an investment into either day-use or permitting when what's working is argue, or what's currently happening is arguably working well, I would prefer we leave it status quo if it's not, if it was a significant issue for our internal enforcement and was creating capacity issues, that's one thing. But right now, it is an opportunity, and Wheatland County ratepayers do have, do have opportunities to take advantage of the water body and the recreational opportunities there. And to Councilor Bigger's point, there is potential tourism. And I think we did, and I recall reading in 2010, we put out a proposal for somebody to run it. We looked at it with alliance clubs in 2020. I think we'd always be open if we had a private sector enterprise coming in and saying, you know, we've identified this opportunity. I would prefer at that time than we approach the province to see if we could consolidate or change something. But if, if there's not a significant problem to be solving right now, I'm concerned that we would be creating more problems by changing our system.
Is it worthwhile, though, just to do a bylaw, just so that we can say no, no permanent structures, no cultivation, and, but generally allow the kind of crown land camping as it is now? Like, I think that's a great idea, actually. Make a bylaw so that we can enforce any issues that, you know, are significant like that, but generally let people, let it go.
That was going to be my, sorry, through the chair, that was going to be my comment. Status quo is great. The only issue we do have is we don't have a mechanism, if we do have a concern, to remove somebody or evict them and so on. Status quo with the ability of a bylaw to back it up, to give us some authority that if something did happen, we would have the authority to do something about it would be greatly beneficial.
It would also transfer to the operators of the other sites, like, Welet Chores and High Eagle, they'd have the, really, they don't have any mechanism now to evict people with, but under that parks bylaw, they would have a lot more, like, control over that as well.
So the recommend, or the report had said that administration could continue working on this based on feedback. Does administration feel like you have enough direction?
So what I'm hearing is not a lease with the province and parks bylaw and try to keep status quo on the county and maybe a low-tech option. We could investigate that as well.
Yeah, and maybe there's a way to, like, get the best of both worlds, and you do some permitting so you have some tracking, but maybe it's not sites or what, more a crown land, like, the equivalent of the crown land permit that the province has done, and then you generate a modest amount of revenue to offset some of the costs of enforcement or that type of thing.
Yeah, I think we have enough to go on to get a report back to council to consider.
Perfect. Excellent. Thank you. Let's move to agenda item 2.4, Muirfield Homeowners Association Letter of Support. Deputy Reeve Claussen had circulated this yesterday.
This morning, actually. I sent an email this morning, so I was at an HOE meeting last night, and they'd reminded me that they had sent me a request for a letter of support. They're doing a grant application for the rec upgrade at the Lyellto Community Center. They are getting a letter from MLA Jejeong, and they would like one from us as well. They asked me for one specifically, and I said, well, technically, I can't do that. I can get council to do that. So that's basically what I'm asking. They, our grant application is in the package. They're looking for a substantial amount of money and with in-kind donations to complete a parking lot, outdoor skating rink, that whole proposal that was presented to council before.
Any questions from the committee?
I can make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to ask staff to develop a letter of support for a grant application on behalf of council.
Any questions or discussion? Does administration need any further information? Any questions or debate? Call the question, all in favor. Motion is carried.
Thank you.
That brings us to the conclusion of our agenda. Committee of the whole meeting is adjourned. We do have public presentation committee following this meeting, and I do see that our 11:20 AM appointment is here. Chantel, would you be prepared to present a little bit early? Yeah, we'll take a break for a few minutes. So I will adjourn the committee of the whole meeting. Thank you, everybody.